Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if everybody's ready. I'm Shaun Lynn Jones, co-chair of the Brookline Neighbor Alliance. And on behalf of the Brookline Neighbor Alliance and the Town Meeting Members Association and the League of Women Voters of Brookline, I'd like to welcome you to this forum on some of the warrant articles that will be discussed at the upcoming annual town meeting in May. Three organizations here have jointly sponsored forums like this for a number of years, and we've tried to select some of the articles that seem to be promoting the most interest, provoking the most debate. And this year, we have chosen some of the articles from the agenda. They include Articles Nine and Ten on diversity in the town workforce and restructuring the Human Relations Department, Article Thirteen on regulating news racks, Article Fourteen on disorderly behavior, Article Sixteen on in-room cooking facilities and lodging houses, and Articles Nineteen, Twenty, and Twenty-One on the expansion of the Coolidge Corner Theater. Usually when we have these forums, there's considerable controversy and debate on either side. This year, somewhat unusually, the debate seems to be focused mainly on Articles Nine and Ten, but because there's considerable interest in some of the others, we've invited the petitioners to come, make the case for the article, and to answer questions. Amelia Koch of the League of Women Voters will serve as a moderator for this discussion. And I'd like to say a few words about the format that we're going to be following. For Articles Nine and Ten, because of the great interest in those two articles, we're going to have a slightly different format. There'll be opening statements of eight minutes on each article, Nine and Ten, and then there'll be questions from the audience. Questions should not be longer than one minute, and they should really be a question, not a short speech, and they should be phrased in a way that it can be answered by proponents of either article, not directed to a specific individual so that only he or she could answer. Answers should not take longer than two minutes, and then we finish the Q and A, we'll have closing statements of four minutes each. We'll follow a similar format for the other articles, except that the opening statements will only be five minutes and the closing statements three minutes. If you do want to ask a question, please come up to this lectern and use the microphone. We also have another procedure if you're too shy or if you just want your question to be anonymous for whatever reason. There are some index cards on the back table here and pens, and if you want to write down your question, drop it in that basket. I will come up at some point during the Q and A and ask that question so that you can hear the answer from the panelists. Without further ado, I'd like to turn this session over to Amelia Koch to begin our discussion of Articles Nine and Ten. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm thinking we're going to start with Nine, and just to be clear, because there are more people speaking to Nine than to Ten, no, than Ten than to Nine, we're going to allot eight minutes, and it will be a combined eight minutes for whoever on this side speaks and eight minutes over here. So, starting, please, with Nine?
Can I have time?
Yes, and thank you.
Could I ask a housekeeping issue and not be on the clock before I do that? I am also obligated to be at another meeting upstairs. I'm glad you moved to the fifth floor, so it's one, you know, a few less floors I have to climb up and down. But they have a hearing that starts at 8:30, which I definitely have to be at, but even before then, I do have to make a short appearance up there, so I have to figure out how to do that. I do have some staff and the chairman of the board who's here if there's a period of time that I'm out of the room for a few minutes.
Well, if you have to leave during the question and answer session, and if someone else might be able to answer questions, we'll try to accommodate that.
It should be brief.
We realize that the two meetings are simultaneous.
It should be brief. Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm ready to go.
Thank you. But I did want to call people's attention to the timekeeper, and she has cards that she'll hold up one minute, 30 seconds, and then stop, and it would really help us move along if we can all work with that. Thank you both. Okay.
Thank you, Amelia. Good evening, everyone. That's three powerful groups altogether, so I think it's a great idea to collaborate and hold this forum. The last time I think I was here, I was talking about parking meters, so I'm not sure which is more controversial, but I'll give it a shot. I wanted to, I am the initiator of Article Nine, and I wanted to tell you why, or, you know, when and why I did that, and that is primarily was in response to the retirement of our long-term human services, excuse me, Human Relations Director Steve Bressler, who has just retired last week. So that's what prompted this. But basically, this article is a reorganizational and administrative response to a staffing issue, which was prompted by Mr. Bressler's retirement. And what it does is it eliminates the Human Relations Youth Resources as a department and the requirement to have a director of that department, and it then creates a structure within the Health and Human Services Department that would elevate the current manager called Human Services Coordinator to a position called Human Relations and Human Services Administrator. And that individual position would then be responsible for managing and working with the Human Relations Commission to meet their mission. The position, so would assume basically all of the administrative and managerial responsibilities that Mr. Bressler previously assumed, and because we are consolidating this position and there will be existing responsibilities from the Health Department and then the new Human Relations responsibilities, we would also create a new full-time position to support the administrator. So it would become from a one-person department currently to at least a two-person department, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. So, I want to be very clear what this article does not do. It does not modify in any way the language that relates to the Human Relations Youth Services Commission. All of that language that's currently in the bylaw would remain intact, all of it. Now, that's not to say that the bylaw shouldn't be reviewed, and I think it should, but this proposal does not do that. I want to tell you what I consider to be the benefits of this proposal. As I just previously mentioned, there is a single-person department. It's a one-person department currently. In my experience, as a manager and the span of control that's required and the resources that are required to manage a department, you need more than one person. And so, as Mr. Bressler retired, it created an opportunity for me to think about a better way to manage this function. And so, what we would have, when all is said and done, we would have this administrator, we would have this new position, this new full-time position. I believe it would be a professional type of position, like a social worker or some other, some professional position. And then we'd also have the benefit of a graduate student who would be assigned to this responsibility, which is a typical approach that the Health Department uses for many of its responsibilities. There would also be clerical and administrative support that exist in the Health Department that doesn't really exist as much for the Human Relations Department currently. The other benefit I believe that this creates is that we have a lot of Human Relations and Human Services programs are, have some synergy to them. And what I think that this consolidation and reorganization does is it puts all of those under the direction of a single person. So, currently in the Health Department, we are dealing with issues of domestic violence and youth at risk and substance abuse. Veterans is in the Health Department, and homelessness issues are all in the Health Department. And so, my feeling is that all those Human Relations issues are related to that, and we can get a better synergy and coordination and collaboration of all of those responsibilities of the town. And then finally, it would also create staff support for some of the other, what I would refer to as orphan committees. We have the Disability Access Commission and the Committee and the Women's Commission, which have no really home, no staff support. And so, my proposal would also put those under the umbrella of what we're talking about here. And I would make one other comment, and that is, if you know the Health Department and you know our current director, Dr. Alan Balsam, you know that it's a department that's very creative, very energetic. As I mentioned, there's graduate students, and there just is a really interesting and engaged group of employees in that department that I believe would create a nice, fresh start and a really, I think, a much more energetic group to tackle some of these issues that have been lingering, I think, for quite a while. Couple of other issues I wanted to mention. There were several, there were some non-human relations tasks that were assigned to Mr. Bressler over the years. One of the most common or important ones was cable television. Has nothing to do with Human Relations, but for whatever reason, my predecessor assigned that responsibility to Mr. Bressler. That and some other non-related functions are going to be reassigned to other departments in the town that are more appropriate. The other thing I would say, well, this is one of many, many forums and opportunities I've had to discuss this issue along with the petitioners of Article Ten, and despite that, you know, there are some differences of opinion, I think there's been some good dialogue that's gone back and forth. One of the issues that has come up a lot is, well, if we put this structure under the direction of the Health Director, does it create the kind of independence and ability to engage with the executive branch of the government, which basically is the Selectmen and myself? And I think it's a good point. There are many sensitive issues that this, the Human Relations Commission is going to be dealing with and has dealt with, and from time to time, that commission and their administrative support need to have a voice directly to the top. And I commit to everyone at this time that that would be explicit in the job description, not for everything, but for some of those sensitive issues. Thank you. I want to make sure that there is an opportunity for a direct report to the executive by this position. Secondly, the question has raised, why now? The Selectmen have created this study committee. Can it wait? My feeling is it cannot wait. Our director has left. I believe this is a prudent time to create better staff support for the Human Relations Commission, regardless of whether there will be changes to the commission's responsibility in the future. And then finally, thank you, I would like to say that at last night's meeting, the Board of Selectmen did act to recommend favorable action under Article Nine, but it did create a small addition, language addition to the article, which effectively says, "We acknowledge that we've created this committee that's going to look at things on a longer-term basis," and that this structure, this organizational structure that's part of Article Nine should be reviewed and will be reviewed at the conclusion of that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, eight minutes.
Good evening. I'm going to go directly to my overview of Article Ten and what Article Ten is about. It is about fairness and independent oversight. The overarching goal is to address the lack of diversity in the town's workforce. This has been acknowledged by all parties, the Selectmen, the town administrator, Human Resources Director, the Human Relations Commission. None of the 25 department heads in our town workforce is a minority. By contrast, approximately 10% of department head-level positions in the state are occupied by minorities. Almost 18% of department head-level positions in the U.S. are occupied by minorities. The goal of Article Ten is to commit us to doing better. Brookline should be leading the country on diversity issues, not falling behind. Article Ten asks that we use Governor Patrick's successful approach to affirmative action equal employment opportunity inclusion and diversity in the workplace as a framework to move Brookline forward. Article Ten does not take away Human Resources responsibilities. It does seek to have Human Resources join the commission in taking a more active approach to workforce diversity. Article Ten does not seek to change the structure of town government. It does seek to change how we do business and to make workforce diversity a priority for all of us.
I'm here in support of Article Ten, but it's my feeling that implementation of either Article Nine or Ten will require starting from some common definitions. So what follows are the definitions those supporting Article Ten are using in reference to hiring. Both nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employer indicate that applicants will be judged based on their qualifications regardless of group membership. Employers in those two categories are open to having a diverse pool of applicants but need take no action to increase the diversity of that group. And that brings us to affirmative action. First, what it is not. It does not mean setting quotas requiring that a specific percentage of hires must be made from specific groups. It does not mean hiring applicants who are less qualified than others in the pool. What then does it mean? That the employer acknowledges the value of a diverse workforce and is willing to institute certain procedures to increase the number of applicants for open job positions, ensuring that job descriptions are an accurate, not inflated, reflection of the skills and experience needed to carry out the job, publishing job listings in professional organizations and publications that are likely to reach a diverse audience, monitoring the search process at various stages to make sure procedures are being followed. Those and other procedures are what are needed. And there's a crucial distinction between the towns declaring itself committed to equal opportunity, which requires no action or change in the town's hiring procedures, and committed to affirmative action, which requires a willingness to develop and implement a set of procedures to be followed in all searches. Despite the towns' expressed desire to increase the diversity of its workforce, its record has been disappointing over the past 40 years. If the town hopes to succeed in increasing that diversity, it must assign to specific staff responsibility for devising, carrying out, and monitoring procedures to bring this about, and it must ensure that those assigned those tasks are not overburdened by other responsibilities. It must be prepared to require that those hiring conform to the agreed-upon hiring process. And finally, it must evaluate the success of those efforts more frequently with the goal of identifying and implementing needed changes.
Arthur Conquest, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. For almost half a century, the town, through its Human Relations Youth Resource Director, has purposely sidestepped affirmative action, racial equality, and social justice issues. When Mariella Ames submitted her Dr. Martin Luther King Warren article to town meeting in 2010, she requested that the town submit an annual diversity report. What has come from these reports so far has been embarrassing and shocking, the fact that there is not one black, Hispanic, or Asian department head in the town leading the list of concerns. There have been unabashed resistance and backroom politicking from every imaginable angle by the Board of Selectmen to thwart every effort by Mariella's initiative to untangle the four-decade-old sanitized apartheid system that's in place, the most recent example being Dr. Adrian Memes's not being hired as the headmaster of Brookline High School a year ago. What's the purpose of the Board of Selectmen's hosting the annual, excuse me, town-wide Martin Luther King celebration when it turns a blind eye to discrimination? Article Nine is a very sophisticated attempt by the Board of Selectmen to continue to support white supremacy with the clever exploitive twist of inserting a black man as the administrator of some of the transfer programs, though with far less, that far less power than his predecessor. Thank you.
Are there more speakers?
Yes, yeah. Good evening. Brooks Ames. We had a visitor last week, Ron Marla, who's one of the chief deputies for Governor Patrick on issues involving affirmative action, equal opportunity, and diversity. One of the things that he said is that you can have a system in place that's effective, that's efficient, and it's very unfair. And I think what a lot of us feel is that when you have 25 white department heads and you have a history that includes only one non-white department head since 1968, that's a system, it may be efficient, it may be effective, but it's very unfair. And we see Article Ten really as a way to move forward, to get out of this rut that we seem to be in. And I'll give one concrete example of where I think an independent commission and an independent human rights director can really bring something to the table. We have an open department head position right now, the planning director. This is a job that in part is responsible for administering community block development grant funds, which are supposed to go to the low-income communities in Brookline. This is a great opportunity to find an applicant that has worked in diverse communities, that has cultural competencies in low-income communities. We have a, we have a job posting, however, that says you have to have a requirement of 10 years' experience. Now, that's the kind of barrier to entry that Ron Marla would say, you know, he would ask, "Why do we have this if this were to the state government?" And if there wasn't a really good reason, he'd say, "Get rid of it." We say you have to have a master's degree in planning. Plenty of people do this job, do that job with a J.D. or not a master's in planning. So we have to start clearing away some of these barriers if we're going to move forward, and that's really what Article Ten is trying to start us towards.
Are we done? We're done? We're done? Okay. So then it would be time for questions. If you, if people would like to line up and take the mic, that would be great, and if not, and you prefer, there are still cards in the back, and just leave your card in the basket in the back if you want to ask a question that way. Otherwise, come to the podium, please. And is there someone who would like to come forward to answer questions instead of Mr. Blackno?
I will.
Thank you very much. So the format for questions is that questioners are limited to a minute and answers are limited to two, and we'll take turns going back and forth between the two sides in terms of who goes first. Please.
Okay. My name is Leslie Epps. I have a question in terms of what Human Resources has in place now related to equal opportunity. Is it true that Human Resources does not have anything in place concerning affirmative action?
Let's start with Ten, please. Would someone here like to answer that question?
Yeah, I think there's...
I think we should, we have a Human Resources Director.
Could I have someone from the panel answer?
Yes, we're trying to give you an authoritative person.
They're all authorities on this. They've done the research.
I'll tell you what, let's do all three, so we'll have a little bit of each.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think there's a lot of confusion about this word affirmative action. There's a lot of confusion about this word affirmative action, and I think if we're going to make any progress, we've got to have a common language and make sure we know what each person means. For example, Sandra, I believe, says that we create a pool of candidates, and that's doing affirmative action. I may be wrong. I thought that's what you said at the AC meeting.
No.
No, okay. I apologize.
Sure, yep.
We'll get to her answering. Is this, there's up to two minutes, so are we done here, or would you like, are there more comment?
Well, I can say that in terms of policy, right now, we don't, in the town, we don't have a policy. That's one of the challenges. Article Ten is trying to set a course that says that affirmative action is okay within the boundaries that the governor set, within the boundaries that Bobby described.
Okay.
I think we can't say that we have a policy of affirmative action right now. We did have an affirmative action plan in 1994. It was discontinued in 2001. We're, we don't have a policy in place right now.
Thank you. Would you like to answer the question?
Well, you want to answer? I'm glad to also.
It's a question for Human Resources process, or...
If you would like to spend two minutes, that's...
Well, why don't you go first and then I'll talk about what I think we're going to do in the reorganization to advance affirmative action.
Thank you very much.
But, so the question was, what does Human Resources currently do for EEO, right? No, not for EEO. I asked, was there a policy in place for affirmative action through Human Resources at this time?
Okay. So the wonderful thing that came out of Mariella's warrant article was this need to, for the town to put together an annual report, and that gave us a fantastic opportunity to put forward what we had already been doing. Now, the affirmative action, I'm an employment and labor law attorney by training, and when I looked at the affirmative action guidelines some years ago, around 2005, it was clear that they were out of date. So I was making attempts to work, to collaborate and change them, and I was not getting very far. And so therefore, I decided to work in my own realm, under my own bylaw, for EEO measures. When we got out of the civil service in 2010, that allowed us to start recruiting in a whole different direction. What I said the other night is, I have not taken on the affirmative action officer responsibilities, and I do not do affirmative action guidelines. Those are under the Human Relations Youth Resources. But my office does follow very closely with all the EEO laws and responsibilities that are under the federal, state, our collective bargaining, our civil service, all the variety of laws that we have to deal with. So I would say that we have been doing EEO all along.
Okay, but it's fair to say that the answer to the question about affirmative action at this time is no? And is it true that the majority of the beneficiaries of affirmative action in the past have been white women?
No. I mean, this is kind of out of context, but I mean, I think affirmative action, affirmative action, in my mind, is taking affirmative steps to work towards an equal and diverse workforce. I've been trying very diligently since I got here in August in 2006 to do those things. Now, we're trying to put them in categories and structures, but the very essence of my work and the work I've been doing, and if you read the last three annual reports on diversity and inclusion, you will see the very real work that Human Resources has been doing to put forward these very high priorities.
Can I take a stab at that question, please?
Can I?
Can I take a stab?
I beg to differ in terms of the people that have benefited most. If you do your research in terms of affirmative action, you will find that white women have benefited. It seems like there's a bit of conflict in terms of the inclusion of people of different colors, races, ethnicities, in terms of Brookline in higher positions, as evidenced by the statistics, as having zero people of color in authority positions. So having said that, it's not only that we are looking for people of color in higher positions, but even more women, white women even. So that's my take on it. If you do the research, you will see who the great, great benefit, beneficiaries have been of affirmative action.
Can I just take 30 seconds, please?
Take my 30 seconds.
Okay.
I just want to say, and I'll just name...
And I am going to give one minute to this side, because he hasn't gotten to speak.
Let him go then, let him go and then come back to me. I want to be fair, okay?
Hi, I'm Alan Balsam, Director of Public Health and Human Services. Let me just say that it's above my pay grade to comment on what the mission of the Human Relations Commission should be, so I'm not taking a position on that. The Selectmen have established a committee to do that. What my job is and what Lloyd Gellino's job is, if we get this reorganization, is to create an affirmative action plan and to hit the ground running with a series of action steps, which we are developing even before the vote is taken, in order to reach out to communities that have traditionally been excluded, generally speaking. So for example, the first thing is to hire a Human Services Specialist. So for example, the first thing is to hire a human services specialist. So we will ask for the input of the Human Relations Commission in what that animal should look like, what those issues are, and creating a job announcement and promulgating it in a way that will reach communities of color, disabled folks, gay, lesbian, transgender communities. These are folks that we want to reach and that we can create a blueprint to try to reach. And I have much more to say about it, but I know my time is up and I apologize.
No, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, 30 seconds over here, and then we have a line here, so we'll go to the line.
I know of three black men in this town over the last 30 years who have applied for department head positions and were overlooked or rejected in favor of three white women. And two of those three took their case to M.C.A.D. and settled, or the town settled, out of court.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, let's go to the mic.
Hi, my name's Chad Ellis. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 13. So I have a sort of a two-part question. The first is almost just a comment, but I'd still like to get your thoughts on it. The focus on the discussion that we've had so far from the Article 10 side has focused entirely on race, which I think is obviously a critical component. But I'm curious to know, to the extent to which you consider the affirmative action program would also include, for example, GLBT members of the community, et cetera. The more important part of the question, when I watched the discussion with the selectmen, it seemed there was some confusion about how this would actually be implemented in practice. And I think, you know, Brooks, I think your comments about removing barriers in job descriptions that aren't really necessary to the position but have the effect of excluding minority applicants is well taken. What I'd love to know is how you see that actually happening in practice, in terms of who has the authority to make decisions like that, or how you see it working.
Thank you very much. And then, since we're going to work with both sides, I'm going to turn here because we started with you all the last time, so I'm going to start over here. And there's two minutes to be divided up, however that's chosen.
Well, I think the question was primarily addressed to the petitioners of 10, but in relation to this discussion about how a job description might limit the ability for underrepresented groups to apply is a good one. And I've certainly read Bobby Nabel's discussion of that as it relates to the planning director. My only concern about that, and that's something that I think should be done collaboratively between the Human Relations and the Human Resources Department, we have unions, we have a lot of labor law, and a lot of issues about internal equity and making sure that positions throughout the town's workforce are accurately classified and compensated. And so you just can't start picking apart one job description without looking at it in a holistic way. And so that's just my brief comment. I would say that we're definitely interested in exploring that avenue. We want to do things. We want to create more diverse workforce, and this might be an avenue to do that.
Thank you. Two minutes for 10.
Well, just on GLT, it's part of, it's part of our bylaw. Sexual orientation is part of our bylaw. Gender identity is one of the amendments we've made to our bylaw. The governor's executive order and our bylaw says, talks about hiring members of underrepresented groups. And I'll go back to something, I'll go back to something Ron Marlowe said. He said, "We treasure what we measure." And right now, we don't keep track of our LGBT employees, so we don't know really whether we're underrepresented or not. So it's a very challenging question, affirmative action for the LGBT community, but we're certainly open to evidence, and we think it's important to measure that sort of thing, to the extent that people are prepared to self-report. So our intent is not to limit ourselves to race, it's underrepresented groups. But race is, but race is the white elephant in the room at all times. And I also, you also asked, and I don't want to miss your question, you also asked about sort of practically, how does it play out? And I know this is going to seem like a dodge, but we see Article 10 really as setting a framework. The governor's executive order sets a framework. You can hang a lot of different things on that framework. Ron Marlowe said, "There's more than one way to skin a cat." And that's something we will all have to work out with the selectmen, with Sandra. I mean, that's something we have to work out.
Thank you. Next question.
Thank you. I'm Patricia Conners, and I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 3. Why has the town had such problematic track record with hiring and promoting minorities? And how would your respective proposals address that problem?
Two minutes?
Well, I can make a try at that. I think when we talk about constructing a set of procedures, it means that in every instance where a job is available, the looking at and constructing the job position becomes a part of it so that, in fact, it represents what the qualifications are, but does not exceed those and therefore exclude people unnecessarily. It also means advertising in places where you're likely to increase your pool. It means having someone take part in the hiring process so that they can be sure that when people are selected as finalists, that those people meet a similar standard and that people who also meet that are not excluded from it. And it means looking at one's process at some point and evaluating its success. So it is not merely putting the job description out, it is really keeping track of the hiring process as it goes on.
So there is, there is still time?
If I may, if I may, I think we still have time. I don't know if this will answer the question, but I hope it is. The proposal that the commission presented to the selectmen with respect to affirmative action and equal employment opportunity has, gives very much the freedom to department heads to address on their own the best practices they can to keep track of applicant flow, descriptions, job descriptions, promotions, hirings, et cetera. The difference of the proposed policy, ours has the affirmative action component. The Human Resources Board proposed policy is only equal employment opportunity. And in fact, if I could ask the question now to the Human Resources...
Thank you, Mariana. All right, two minutes.
Yes, thank you. Well, I will say, I want to say that I've been here for about two and a half years. And in that period of time, I have had an opportunity to hire some folks. Actually, it's the Board of Selectmen that does the hiring of department heads, and I make a recommendation. I will say, I am not happy with the fact that we do not have any department heads of color. It's not something I'm proud of. Now, that doesn't mean that the town, you know, doesn't want them or has discriminated necessarily. I've only been here for a while, so I can't give you all of the answers. I will say, I've been in municipal government management for about 30 years. And I will tell you that factors that, like civil service and unions and the economy and all sorts of things, have a way of diverting the town's attention sometimes from priorities. I think it's great that the Human Relations Commission is revitalized and will promote this issue. I'm very, very interested in working collaboratively with them to diversify our workforce. We have a number of minorities in our workforce. We've promoted a number of minorities in our workforce. I like the Marlowe's phrase, and Brooks', the, you know, you treasure what you measure. I'm a firm believer in that. We have to do a better job of developing statistics and benchmarks so that we can have some goals. That's it. And I would like to just clarify one issue on the job description issue.
Do you have just about 30 seconds? 30 seconds.
All right. So I think that there's a little bit of confusion about a job posting versus a job description. And I want to just let people know that we have a very sophisticated job description, pay-grade matrix. And these things are not willy-nilly made on the fly by any means, and we do a concerted effort to make sure that there's internal integrity and external integrity with regard to our job descriptions. And when it comes to recruitment, we do have to do a broad base, like Bobby Nabel's talked about. That's what we do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions that members of the audience have submitted on cards that I'd like to ask on their behalf. The first one is a practical matter, although most people think the choices between Article 9 or Article 10, what happens if they both pass? Or what happens if they both fail, which may be more likely? What does that mean, not only for the town budget, but the town's organization? And I suppose, what would the proponents of each article want to do going forward in the event of either scenario?
Thank you. And we'll start over here.
I have no idea what happens if they both pass. No idea. I think they, I think they are not, I think they are exclusive, and somehow they just couldn't work together if they both passed. But if they both failed, clearly, we would still, we would have a current bylaw that requires certain responsibilities, and I would work towards doing that. I think clearly, we do have another process going on, the selectmen have appointed a study committee. And frankly, you know, until that study committee was finalized, I think what we would have in place would be something of a temporary nature, but I would certainly commit to staffing the Human Relations Commission as vigorously as I could in this sort of transitional period.
I think that no matter what happens, we are beginning a conversation in this town that is extremely healthy. And I am a big fan of putting this under the framework of, this is a public health issue, this is a wellness issue. So this is the beginning of a wonderful journey, and so I think this is really healthy for the town, no matter what happens.
Someone else?
Well, one thing I think is that Article 9, I think, is really agnostic as to what the policy's going to be. Article 9 is really agnostic as to what the town's policy should be. It really doesn't say anything about what the policy should be. And Article 10 is quite different. It does say that we should have a policy of affirmative action, as the governor's sort of set out over the past five years. So that's a big difference. So in a way, they're not that different. I mean, I'm sorry, they're not mutually exclusive. There's no reason that the selectmen couldn't adopt the governor's approach tomorrow. The reason we have the articles is that they haven't. So that's my take.
Thank you. Next question.
Article 10's proponents rely on the Massachusetts Executive Order 526 as a model, yet the state actually places the director of the Office of Diversity and Equal Opportunity within Human Resources. On the other hand, Article 10 places affirmative action and equal opportunity outside Brookline's Human Resources Department. Isn't this inconsistent with what the state is doing?
Well, I'll answer that.
We do start here in two minutes.
Yeah, I'll answer that. When we said we wanted to, we were asking the town to adopt a policy of affirmative action, equal opportunity, consistent with the governor's executive order, we meant a policy, not structure. Our intent was never to take the governor's structure and plop it into Brookline. It was really about setting a direction and a course. So the structure question, I've got actually plenty of answers to that, and I don't know how productive it is, but I mean, one answer is that Ron Marlowe is not in Human Resources, and he sits above Sandra Borders. And he's there to be a troubleshooter, and I think that that's the role that, and I've got a few commission members here with me, that's the role that the commission would have, to say, you know, "Why do we have a job description that says you have to have 10 years of experience?" I don't believe that's a union job. So that's, that can't be the reason that we have that description.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not the petitioner for Article 10, so I'm not sure I could answer that from that perspective you asked, but I would say that, you know, the state is organized differently than the town. My, I don't think, frankly, that it should be as part of Human Resources in this town, and that's why I've suggested Health Department, Health and Human Services Department.
And I think, you know, there are lots of organizations that have very healthy and robust diversity and inclusion programs with oversight of affirmative action officers and affirmative action programs. And I think that's a great model, and I have been very careful in my work not to step on the toes of the commission's guidelines, even though they are outdated, but absolutely welcome an opportunity to work together with them.
And what I'll say is that Dr. Gellino and I are totally committed to advance affirmative action. Those of you who know me know that I've spent my career doing that and other things, and I think those of you who know Lloyd and know his background know that that's the case. So while it is true we are agnostics in a way because we're not taking a position on what the mission should be, but we know what the mission is now. The mission of the Human Relations Commission is to advance affirmative action. It's to advance groups who have been otherwise left out of the scene, including people of color, linguistic and ethnic minorities, GLT folks, folks with disabilities. And what this will allow us to do is to work with all of those groups, including the Commission on the Disabled, the Women's Commission, and the Human Relations Commission, to advance all of those groups. And we have an action plan that we will be introducing, which has concrete measures of, within the first six months, what we will accomplish to do all of the things that you're talking about. Now, one thing that is different is the matrix relationship.
Sorry.
Next question.
I do have one more that was submitted on a card, and it also pertains to Article 10, although I expect the proponents of either article could comment. Under Article 10, the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission could hold public meetings dealing with affirmative action and equal opportunity issues, including dismissals, promotions, and so on. Have Brookline's public employee unions agree to this procedure and its impact on the grievance process? Have they been consulted at all?
And we would normally start over here, if that's okay? So we'll get comment here, and then you guys can decide.
Well, I think that's a very good point, and I know that the petitioners will be able to talk about it and what their intent is, but, you know, the wording of the proposed article is troublesome to me because it does essentially create another Human Resources Department and the kind of processes that the Human Resources Department has in a complicated setting of unions, civil service, and other labor laws, both state and federal. So I don't like that language, and I don't, I don't think it will work very well in this community. I think, I see the Human Relations Commission serving more of an oversight role as opposed to an implementation role in relation to human resource issues.
So Sean, that's a good question. The policy was a proposal, and the policy that we put together as a commission, we sent it to the selectmen and we asked for a meeting with the selectmen because these are exactly the details that really have to be worked out, not just by one commission, but by the commission with the selectmen, with Human Resources, with the town administrator. So I'm sure there are going to be challenges along the way in putting together the details of a policy, but you have to have, you know, people in the room who are willing to talk. So I welcome an opportunity to talk about challenges.
And also to clarify, the implementation would be under Human Resources and the different departments. It is up to the different departments to implement the policy. And again, they... And again, they will have, I mean, if they followed our proposal, or not just accept, but accept to discuss about it, then the departments would have great freedom to act in the best way they deem appropriate, useful. The commission is into the overseeing, not into implementing. I hope this clarifies the concerns of implementation and we being in the middle of it on a daily basis.
Satisfied? Very good.
One other question is, what is the selectmen's diversity committee actually charged with? What will its role be, either on its own or with regard to Articles nine and 10? I'm just not sure how it fits in to this whole process and this ongoing discussion.
Thank you.
Well, I can't give you exactly what its charge is. And I actually don't think our side is really that conversant on the charge or what the committee set out to do. It's really our view that the place to decide a big policy question, like which direction is the town going to go with workforce diversity, is going to go more towards an affirmative action, or is going to go more towards equal opportunity? That is a great opportunity for town meeting to speak. We don't think it's a good idea, or I can speak for myself, I don't think it's a good idea to put this in yet another committee. I mean, we've been through many committees in this journey of the petition. I had no idea there were so many committees in town. But I don't think punting it to another committee is the right thing to do.
And I also think that this committee that the selectmen have put together is a setup. I mean, I personally am not comfortable with the makeup of that committee. I think that there are too many people on that committee who have already stated their opinions about Article 10. And I think it's unfair.
I would like to ask for someone to answer the question about what the charge of the committee is.
I intend to.
Great. So shall we?
You guys still have time now?
Thirty seconds if you'd like.
I don't know how to respond unless I know the answer to that question.
You can.
If I may, please, within the 30 seconds. For me, the setting up of a study committee is a way to shy away and not deal with the issue. And it is, again, it's putting an excuse not to address it. As Mr. Conquist has said, also, the members of the committee, several at least, have stated vocally their opposition to Article 10 and to having the Human Relations Commission push the issue. Thank you.
Yes, well, I do have the charge here, and it's fairly short and I can read it, but I would respectfully disagree with the statements that it's a sham or somehow predetermined. I, you know, I think that you've already heard that there's been some lack of progress and productive dialogue. And I think this committee is an effort to try to jumpstart that. And clearly, anything that this committee does will have to go to the selectmen, and I would suggest a town meeting eventually. So town meeting will have a say. The charge reads as follows. This is, and this is called the Selectmen's Committee on Diversity, Equal Employment Opportunities, and Affirmative Action. The town of Brookline has had a longstanding commitment to diversity and inclusion. In order to reaffirm the town's commitment to nondiscrimination and to review what policies and actions will best ensure equal opportunity and protection of civil rights, the Board of Selectmen is establishing a committee on diversity, equal employment opportunities, and affirmative action. I do have a copy of this, and on the back of it is the membership of this committee. So I'll just leave it here. If anybody wants to look at it, I believe it's on the town's website as well.
Can I take just 30 seconds? I just wanted to clarify for the audience here that, again, I think I've underscored the fact that we're not, that human resources is not sitting idly by. And I also want to make the statement that the Human Resources Board, one of the things we do is make policy. And we had been working on an anti-discrimination policy. When we finished, we moved on to an EEO policy. There was an EEO policy before the Board of Selectmen, as well as the affirmative action policy. It's my understanding, and this is my personal understanding, that once the warrants were filed, they were both put on hold until we saw what the vote. But I just want people to be clear that there is an EEO policy that was drafted and approved by my HR board.
Thank you very much. Next question? Please.
Stanley Spiegel, excuse me, town meeting member from Precinct Two. A brief comment, and I'd like your reactions. I find the level of suspicion and distrust that I'm hearing in this room to be palpable and very upsetting. In my opinion, people such as Mel Kleckner, Sandra DeBeau, Alan Balsam, and Lloyd Gellino are people whose ability and skill and dedication to a diverse workforce is unparalleled. I have no reason to doubt that they, we're fortunate to have people of that caliber who will be willing and eager and competent to take the lead. And I'm very concerned about, as I just said before, the level of distrust. So there must be some reason for it. And if you'd care to tell me what that is, I'd care to tell everybody what it is. That's my reaction to what I'm hearing tonight. Thank you.
Who are you asking that question to?
Well, the whole.
Okay, got you.
Can I say something about that? I think that, I'll speak for myself. I'm a big fan of Mel's. He's a straight shooter, and when he makes a mistake, he owns it. So there's no question in my mind about Mel. There's no question in my mind about Alan Balsam because several years ago, he allowed me to have space to run a dialogue group for four years, which we were dealing with critical issues in the town. And I have had conversations with Lloyd. So it's got nothing to do with the competence of these individuals. There are serious, Stanley, systemic issues here. And at the end of the day, regarding the BOS not being, they have two choices. They can be reactive or proactive. And there are many of us who are looking for the BOS to be proactive. And there are some people who feel that by setting up another committee, it only confirms a bias, fair or unfair, that the BOS is being reactive. So nobody is questioning the competence of these individuals. In fact, we want them to succeed. And they've all said indirectly that at the end of the day, it's about the BOS.
I should have included the BOS in my description of people with whom I have great confidence in your decency and your commitment. I'm sorry I excluded them.
Thank you very much. And is there an interest in commenting?
Just very briefly, of course, I would have to agree with you on the Board of Selectmen since they appoint me. But I really don't have a comment other than to say, appreciate some of the comments that were made. I do have every faith in my staff and Sandra DeBeau, who I want you to know is a true professional. She came to the town from a very responsible human resources position in the Boston Police Department. She's a lawyer, a labor issue, which is very prominent in that department, of course. So other than that, I really don't want to comment. I do have a lot of faith, and I like everybody at this table. After last week's forum, which I have to say, I really appreciate Brooks and Mariella for your leadership in putting that together, I left there and said, we've got to, it's too important and too inspiring to hear what we heard, to not work together. And I'm fully committed to doing that.
Is there? So there's time now for closing statements, three minutes to each side, and, excuse me, four minutes to each side. And you spoke last, so would you like them to make closing statements first, or would you like them to make closing?
Can I ask a question that I don't want to be allowed?
Do you want to take a turn at the mic? I don't see why that's not perfectly legitimate.
Thank you. Thank you. This question is for the Human Resources or Article nine. I think I understood that you have been doing EEO only for several years. Would you agree that the EEO, equal employment opportunity, policy as implemented has been enough, has done the job to increase diversity? Or would you agree that, first that question, please?
And I am going to give both sides a chance to answer it as you're now in your role of question.
Amelia, I'm not sure I understand. Was this to be still a question and answer period?
This is a question and answer period. And she asked, as we were trying to decide who would make closing arguments, whether she could be a questioner. And I said she could change hats, and she is now a questioner. But she won't be answering that question, but she is asking.
Okay, well, I'd like Sandra DeBeau to answer in that case.
I feel like this is one of the instances where we're splitting hairs. The, I have been very careful because I know that the folks on the Human Relations Youth Resources Board feel very strongly about their guidelines and that they are their guidelines. All the work, I'm just saying, my perspective, and this predates you, Mariella, because, you know, you're fairly new to the board, you and I've had interactions previously. But I'm talking about prior to this re-energized board. So when I say that I have not been doing affirmative action, I mean, I've not been taking Steve Bressler's affirmative action role. That's not my job. But I have affirmatively, since I've been in Brookline, made change, pushed back on department heads, made processes more consistent. I mean, part of the confusion that is going to happen if warrant 10 is passed is that it is centralized, recruitment is centralized. It comes through me. We put committees together, we review everything, we put the posting out specifically so that we can be consistent in the way that we, and because I have the expertise and my office has the expertise that department heads do not have. And we have a very systematic approach of recruitment.
Sandra, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So when, no, no, no.
You have to let her have her time.
So when you say, am I doing affirmative action? I believe in my soul that that is affirmative action. I am trying to create and brand Brookline as a diverse and inclusive that includes one aspect of opening up the pools, opening up our applicant pools, trying to get more people in. You've heard me talk about all the networking we've done, all the different places that we have advertised. And it's part of EEO affirmative action work.
Okay, now, now, hold on. You don't have to respond, but there's an invitation on this side to have two minutes to speak to this question as well. No? If there's a no, it's no, just say no. No, thank you.
Yeah, no.
No, okay, all right. So are there further questions, Sam?
Yes. I, my question was whether EEO, the plan, had, we had a way to measure the progress, the effect. The answer was not satisfying to me, but.
I don't know what EEO plan you're talking about.
Well, you had mentioned in your presentation that you had been doing equal employment opportunity for years. And so I wanted to know if that was enough in your view, or if we actually in fact needed an affirmative action plan? Because the numbers in years have not changed at the higher levels. And so the next question I had is, would you agree, and I thought this is what I understood too, would you agree that affirmative action has been tasked to the commission historically for years? And now also, you have, I understood that you agree that you haven't done affirmative action, and that is something that the commission does. The question then is, would you agree that we in fact would benefit if we had an affirmative action besides equal employment opportunity policy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so two minutes?
Quoting Ron Marlowe and many other people, there are many ways to skin a cat. I think we all have the same goal. I'm not going to get in debate as to whether or not I have done affirmative action. I believe that my actions have been affirmative, and they are seeking equal opportunity. There is a bylaw. So we're talking about structure, and we're talking about what I'm actually doing in my job. The job that I do is full of requirements and rules with regard to fairness in the unions, under civil service, under the disabilities law, under the FMLA, under 150B, under the federal government. The areas that we could do a better job is data collection. All our processes are manual. But I refuse to say that we do not have a diverse workforce. Can we be doing better at the top? Absolutely. Do we have turnover coming up in the next couple of years? Absolutely. Do I look forward to changing this? Absolutely. Do I think we're on the right road? Absolutely. If you look at the three reports that I have written because of the warrant article that requires us to, it's not like the work wasn't being done. But now we have an opportunity to actually lay out what it is we're doing. I think it's helpful. I think it's meaningful what we've been doing. And there's more work to be done forever.
Comment on your side? Two minutes? Okay, all set? All right, thank you. Okay, closing arguments, and we're going to start with closing arguments right here.
I think to some extent, I commented on how I felt after last week's forum on Wednesday, I believe it was Wednesday evening. Very inspired, you know, very humbled by that discussion, and very committed to make things happen better. It's not going to happen overnight. We have a lot of work to do. I think it's going to be somewhat controversial over the next few weeks, leading up to town meeting, and then of course, as the Selectmen's Committee gets going, there's going to be some uncertainty going on. But I'm fully committed. I hope to be here to see it through. The other point I want to make is, as we wait for this to happen, we have to have a good structure in place to support the Human Relations Commission and the programs and services that are to benefit our less represented groups. I am 100% confident that the structure that I've put together will work. I feel very strongly about that. And I certainly hope that Article nine can pass as a result of that.
I'd like to say that I feel very confident that Lloyd and I can work across the aisle with our comrades to do the right thing around affirmative action here. We have experience doing it. We have an action plan. We'll hit the ground running. And what I'm praying is that the kind of the distrust that existed, and I don't feel personally that there has been that distrust between Lloyd and me and members of the commission. We've noticed the respect that you've treated us with, and I hope you've noticed it back at you guys as well. But we're going to work with you. We're going to make this thing work. We have ideas of how to do it, how to institutionalize it. And we're going to bring all the commissions together. And I believe that affirmative action will be front and center, not only on your agenda, but on the agenda of the other commissions as well. And I'm looking forward to working with you on it. I think we can do a good job. And if the group that the selectmen puts together shakes it up, then we'll do it different. But for the time being, I think we can do it this way. And then you'll have a chance to see. Hey, if it didn't work, you know, then that's cool. But I think it's going to work. Hey, if it didn't work, you know, then that, that's cool, but I think it's going to work.
Right. No? How many more minutes?
Yep. And, and just really briefly, I, I think what you see here is that there are many people up here who feel very passionate about this issue, and that's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing at all, and I think, like Larry said, it's important that this conversation is occurring at all. When you get to changing bylaws, when you get to working with diversity and affirmative action and inclusion, whatever you want to call it, there are sensitive issues and it has delicate work, and it has to be done appropriately. When, same thing goes for writing and rewriting bylaws. The, the problem I have with this bylaw is that I don't think it clarifies the issue and the roles between the commissions. I think it greatly confuses them. And so I am hopeful that people will look past the emotion and recognize that we both want the same thing, but to look at the clear language that's being proposed, and it is confusing the matter, not clarifying. And I think that the fact that the board of selectmen has put together a commission to look at where these lines should be drawn is very important.
Our, our hope is that town meeting ultimately will decide this question. And the question is really, what direction are we going to go? It, it's one, I, I respect Alan, and he says that he's going to follow affirmative action, but it doesn't really mean much from one department head. It has to come from the top. And I've been to a lot of selectmen's meetings, and I have never heard the selectman say, "We as a town have decided we are going to practice a policy of affirmative action. We are going to eliminate discriminatory barriers. We are going to remedy past discriminatory practices. We are going to recruit, retain, hire, and promote members of underrepresented groups. We are going to ensure diversity and equal opportunity in all facets of the workplace." I have not heard that. And I want, our, our group wants to put that to town meeting. Let town meeting give a nudge, give a little push. I think, I think honestly, the selectmen are looking for it. I think Mel has as much as said that he's looking for it. What he has said is that we need to have the conversation where we decide what kind of community we're going to be. So let's have that conversation, let's vote as town meeting members, as citizens, on which way we're going to go. It doesn't have to go to a committee. We have the information we need to decide which way we're going to go.
Okay, thank you. Two things. If nothing else, this discussion between nine and 10 is bringing the question of race to the forefront of this town. We do not want to discuss race. And it's not, it's between person to person in our communities or whatever, and I'm glad that we're having this, okay? Second thing, I want people in this town to talk to Latinos and Black people who are at the other end of the spectrum in their workforce. We don't have Black and Latinos and department heads hear what the people at the bottom are saying about their work conditions in this community. It is horrible, it's disgraceful. Now, they may not say it to you as, you know, they're superiors, but I go around town and talk to people, whether it's the library, whether it's the police department with policemen, whether it's people in the schools, et cetera, okay? And I hear the stories. It's disgraceful. And we, as a community, need to do better, and I will fight until I have not one breath of air left in me that we correct this. I'm not, as some people think, moving away. I'm staying here to fight. Thank you.
I think I'd like to say for one, I, I for one am not interested in trying to divine people's motives for why they do things. It seems to me that what we have in common is a desire to see how to be effective in achieving some commonly expressed goals. That goal is the increased diversity of the town. To do that requires that we come together and establish some procedures that we can follow with the people who are here currently and with people who will come after that. That's what's important to me, and it's the result of that that I'm interested in.
Thank you all very much.
If the petitioners and other participants for Articles Nine and Ten could just take their name placards with them and any other personal items and papers, I'd now like to invite the petitioners of Article 13 to take seats on either side of the moderator so we can begin that discussion. Thank you very much.
Well, hello again. I'm fine, thank you. How are you? Thank you very much. Excuse me? Oh, yes, I am still here, thank you. Hello. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. All right, and so you are?
Dick Benka.
No, no, yeah, I'm, I'm good with Dick Benka, but.
We're on, we're both on the same, there's really.
You're on the same side, you're both, but you're.
We're on different sides of you than on the same.
We're partners.
Very good. Okay, so one of you gets an opening statement, one can do an opening, who?
We're going to share.
Okay, so you've got five minutes to do an opening statement, and.
If we could clear the room and get started with the next warrant article, that would be appreciated. The next warrant article is 13, and I have Richard Benka and Jean Stringham speaking to Article 13. Thank you very much. And I'm going to begin with an opening statement, and opening statements will be shared between the two speakers, and it's five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Well, I don't think warrant Article 13 is going to engender as much passion and intensity as the previous two, but I'm pleased to be here tonight with Dick. This is a citizens' petition that grew out of a neighborhood association meeting, and I'm really happy and proud of that. Last April, a year ago April, the Coolidge Corner South Side Neighborhood Association met with Cara Bruton, who's in the room, from the Economic Development Advisory Board, and some of her, some of the people on that board. And the topic of that conversation was what we liked and didn't like about Coolidge Corner. And one of the things that came up was, well, we really wanted it to look, you know, more attractive. And one of the issues that was getting in the way was the news boxes. And by news boxes, I mean any plastic or metal thing. It could be an apartment circular, but anyway. It, so the whole thing grew at, from my point of view, out of the Neighborhood Association movement or advocacy and effort. So I wanted to do say that. And so what I'll do is give a little background, and then Dick will give some of the specifics of what the warrant article does. So I brought my little show and tell. The DPW helped us, this is, this was Brookline tab, "Is this news rack ugly?" This is what we were dealing with at the time, kind of graffiti, trash, mini boxes, more graffiti and more trash. And that's the kind of thing we were concerned about. So our, our news, our article was helped, we helped, got the help, I should say, from town council and the Department of Public Works, which was very useful. And so far, we've been endorsed by the Economic Development Advisory Board, by the Chamber of Commerce, by the Advisory Committee, and by the Board of Selectmen. And I hope tonight that you'll support us as well. So Dick, do you want to give some specifics of it?
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much, Jean. Jean can be very persuasive, and particularly when Jean does her slideshow and photo montage and fills an email box with about 60 photos of newspaper boxes that have graffiti on them or black paint on them, or that are broken or rusted or are filled with trash, she can get your attention, and she got my attention. And I also really do want to give some credit to Bob Kramer, who's a former planning board member, who, over the years that I've been a selectman, has tweaked me on a number of occasions about newspaper boxes and whether we or I could do something about them. When Jean contacted me after her Neighborhood Association meeting, and I dug into this with DPW, it became obvious that we're currently laboring under a really unwieldy enforcement mechanism. We have one permit inspector in town who, in addition to responsibility for news boxes, has responsibility for the town's dig safe markings, for permitting utilities and others who are working on town streets, for arranging the staging and the scheduling of that work on town streets, and for monitoring and inspecting the work and the repairs that are done to town streets. So this gentleman's dance card really is full with work. And we, under the current bylaw, had, I discovered, we discovered, really created a very, very difficult enforcement situation. For example, under the current bylaw, a news rack owner can put out a rack for 14 days without applying for a permit. So if the inspector sees a news rack on the street, he has to go back 14 days later to see whether a permit has been applied for. If it hasn't been, he then can cite that news rack for a violation, but he has to wait another 10 business days. And after that, he has to wait 30 business days before he can remove the news rack. So in essence, a news rack can be out on the street for two months without a permit. And as far as I know, there's no other community in Massachusetts that has that. News rack owners, on many occasions, don't bother, or have not in the past bothered to renew in a timely fashion. This requires a timely renewal. It sets a calendar year renewal period. Under the current bylaw, renewals can happen at any time during the year. This makes that a much more manageable renewal process for our town inspectors. News racks must be, must be in good condition now to be permitted initially. So this will bring news racks up to snuff at least once a year. Outstanding fines and fees have to be paid before renewal. Specific standards are articulated for the condition of news racks. And we, if I could have another 30 seconds, I'll just finish.
Okay.
And we, with respect to graffiti, we bring the news rack bylaw in conformity with the town's graffiti bylaw, which essentially requires removal of graffiti within 14 days. That's a much more lenient period than other communities have, and it essentially treats news racks, which are on our public ways, the same as other property in town. We say that you have to remove graffiti. You cannot anymore follow the solution de jour, the, the common solution to graffiti, which has been spraying over it with black paint. And in many ways, under the current bylaw, the cure has really been worse than, than the disease. So graffiti either has to be removed, or on the opaque part of the news boxes, the news rack owner can spray over with a paint that's the same color as the opaque part of the news rack. So it essentially gives that flexibility to the news rack owner, gives 14 days to deal with that issue, and we think really rationalizes the enforcement of our news rack ordinance. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, so are there questions for these two kind people who are here?
Hello, I'm Naomi Switzer, a town meeting member from Precinct 10. Just wanted to, on that last comment that you made about graffiti, I'm wondering if there's anything in what you're proposing, that if there's inflammatory graffiti, that there is a plan for faster removal of it?
There, there is not specifically in the changes, and I think in the, in the current bylaw, that, you know, there's, there's not something that's targeted directly at inflammatory graffiti. That may be something down the road.
Some, some towns do have that. If it's obscene or inflammatory, they can remove it immediately.
Are there additional questions? Please.
I'm Charlotte Jones, co-chair of the Brookline Neighbor Alliance and town meeting member from Precinct One. I have a question that was stimulated by my colleague Stanley Spiegel's question last night at the Advisory Committee when we discussed this article. He worried about politically motivated graffiti being sprayed on the news racks of publications that might be politically offensive to some, or at least politically different. That may or may not be a problem, I don't know whether it happens, but it did make me wonder whether this graffiti provision could be exploited by competitors, whether The Herald would send out, you know, someone with a spray can to spray all the Globe's news racks, or vice versa, and that it would be unfair, in effect, to impose this standard that would really force one newspaper to remove its news racks. And I guess a broader question is just how serious is the graffiti problem? How many news racks get spray painted or, or otherwise marked up with graffiti?
Can I, should I answer the first and you can answer the second?
Yeah, exactly.
The, the bylaw does not require the removal of news racks if graffiti has been sprayed. All it requires is that the graffiti be removed or cleaned up, and that could be as simple as going out with a spray paint can that matches the color of the box, or in the case of the transparent window, replacing the window. And news rack owners, like other private property owners in Brookline, are given 14 days to do that, which I think is a, is an eminently reasonable period for that. You know, if you're talking about politically unpopular news racks, if in Brookline, taking political unpopularity, if Karl Rove were publishing a newspaper and put a news rack out and somebody spray painted that, or vice versa, these are boxes that are on the public ways, they're on the public streets, and I think to say, "Look, you should maintain them and, and take care of them, and you have 14 days to do it," is reasonable. Obviously, people should be prosecuted who deface boxes with graffiti, but if that does happen, to allow it to remain, I think, is, is not appropriate. And Jean?
In terms of the scope of the problem, last year there were 191 news boxes across town, and now that number's down to 138. And in Coolidge Corner alone, last fall, my husband and I did a little public health survey with photographs and notes, and we looked at 52 news boxes. Three quarters of them were in bad condition, and one quarter was in good, were in good condition. And I'm so happy to report that this year, this, this 2013, there are, there are less news boxes. I don't have a head count yet, I'm going to do it soon before town meeting, but pretty much all of the news boxes on the street, in Coolidge, in the streets in Coolidge Corner are now in good condition. So things have really changed around, and I'm hoping that with the passage of this warrant article, things will continue to, to get better. And with the internet and the importance of the internet, I think the number of news boxes will probably start to decrease, but we don't know for sure.
I think we have another question?
Janice Khan, town meeting member from Precinct 15. And one question that I've, that came up actually, in another discussion, was, and, Dick, you mentioned that this deals with, with boxes in the public way, and it was mentioned that some boxes actually are not in the public way, some of them may actually be on private property. And will this bylaw also address those boxes?
The permitting is required. The permitting is required only for boxes, but under the existing bylaw, it's required only for boxes that are on public ways, i.e. public sidewalks, in our case, and this doesn't expand that.
Thank you. There being no more questions, then I'm going to ask if there are any closing comments.
Let me just say one thing. I think one change that has already occurred administratively, and you may notice this if you go out and you look at the newsboxes, as a town, we have gone to larger yearly colored permits on the newsboxes. The permits that used to be on the newsboxes were about this big, and now they're about this large, and they are colored-coded by year, so that it will be much easier for the town to enforce them. And that's something that, to enforce the bylaw in terms of permitting, that's something that Andy Papasturgen in DPW initiated as an administrative matter as we were working through this process. I would hope that this would not be a controversial article. Its goal really is to rationalize the enforcement mechanism, and to try to make sure that it's effective, and that it's something that we can use under our current manning structure to deal with news racks that have been in disrepair and that are derelict. And we have been in contact with the DPW in this process to see what will work with them. We've been in contact with town council to make sure that we don't offend any free speech rights with regard to this, and we hope that town meeting will support it. I do want to thank the League of Women Voters, and the Town Meeting Members Association, and the Brookline Neighborhood Alliance. This really is a neighborhood issue, so I think it's entirely appropriate that it come before all of you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
Make your tags, please.
Sure, thank you.
And do we have speaker for disorderly behavior, Article Fourteen? So we have Stanley Spiegel, and Stanley, would you like to introduce yourself at all?
I will.
All right, very good. For those of you who know Stanley.
If I can remember who I am, I'll be happy to do that. I'm Stanley Spiegel, I'm a co-petitioner of this article. Nancy Heller, who's in Morocco, I believe, at this point, and therefore she's not here tonight, but she entrusted me to appear, and here I am. This article is a companion article, it's something that passed by town meeting just a couple of years ago, the nuisance house bylaw, which dealt with parties on private premises that were disturbing neighborhoods. But it did not relate to a problem which is all too prevalent in my part of town, North Brookline, but in other neighborhoods as well, and that is the problem of people just walking down the sidewalk, late at night, two in the morning, whatever, making noise at the top of their lungs, perhaps, or at least loud enough to disturb people's peace and quiet and sleep. This has nothing to do with how people might be saying, as far as we're concerned, they can say anything they want, it's the volume that's of concern, because it's the volume that wakes people up. So what this bylaw does, this proposed bylaw, is to explicitly state that part of being a disorderly person, for which we already have a bylaw, includes disturbing the residential peace and quiet, peace and quiet in the neighborhood. Town council has told me that that's really understood anyway, but the reason for putting it before a town meeting is so that town meeting can have an affirmative vote, we hope, which will both acknowledge that the problem exists, that it's an important problem, and that it should be solved, should be dealt with. The other part explicitly refers to that this section of the bylaw can be enforced non-criminally by the police, that is, they don't have to go under the state statute, which would give offenders a criminal record, which they and others are reluctant to do, because they're often young people, maybe college kids, maybe a little bit older, but you don't want to saddle somebody with a criminal record, a misdemeanor charge. And the law seldom, in fact, has never, as far as I know, been enforced. This would, if passed, would allow the police to basically give something like a traffic ticket, it's a bylaw violation ticket. They could have done this all along, frankly, but again, this highlights the fact that this is an option for the police. The only material thing it does really is increase the fine, which had been fifty dollars for a generic bylaw variation, to, in this instance, be a hundred dollars. Both Nancy and I felt that that would give it more sting, that is, be more impactful, so that perpetrators would take the offense seriously, because a hundred bucks is more serious than fifty. There are parts of the bylaw, that existing bylaw, that have been, concern has been raised, there are issues, the bylaw refers to coarse language and so on. In fact, we changed the misspelling, they spelled coarse like a racecourse, or coarse in school, rather than course, as in C-O-A-R-S-E, meaning coarse language. We did change, correct that, but that's in there, that constitutionally questionable or challengeable language, and that's going to stay in the bylaw whether we pass Article Fourteen, which I hope we'll do, or if we don't. There's nothing, under the rules of town meeting, that we can do at this late date to strike potentially offensive language, because it's beyond the scope of the warrant. We've spoken to the moderator, he won't allow it, and he's right not to allow it. We have spoken to the chief of police, who's all for giving the police, not really a tool that they didn't have, but highlighting the fact that, A, it's an important concern to the town, and residents in the town, and it's something that the police have the authority to handle non-criminally, which he believes, and others believe, will make it more readily enforceable. Also, the fact that it's non-criminal means that a police officer can witness a thing himself without having to have a complainant for disturbance of the peace, because on a criminal violation, I've been told, if somebody says somebody's disturbing the peace, that person has to go to court and testify, my piece was disturbed. That's true in a criminal case. But to deal with it non-criminally, a police officer can, on his own, or her own, spot the offense, spot the infraction, and ticket the person. And that's important, because by the time anybody would call and say, people are walking down my street, making a lot of noise, by the time the police would come, they're long gone. But a police officer can be stationed on problematic streets, observe the phenomenon, ticket the offenders right then and there, no complaint necessary, no complaint necessary. A ticket is issued, a fine is levied, no criminal violation, one hopes this will put an end to an important problem.
Thank you very much. And are there any questions?
I agree with this article, I'm not a town meeting member, however, but I haven't lived close to your neighborhood, but I'm not bothered because I'm far enough away, but I know that people are bothered. Would the police be there? I mean, isn't a moving thing, where people are walking and talking? How could the, without your complaint, how would the police know?
Well, the police gets, they get staked out. I mean, that's how they do things. How do they stop somebody running a red light? They're sitting there, watch.
People running around.
Well, from time to time, if the chief feels it's important, and a vote of town meeting, I think, would underscore the importance of it, yes, they do this even now to try to spot noisy behavior in North Brookline neighborhoods, such as Pleasant Street, St. Paul Street, and so on. So that's how it would, as a practical matter, be enforced. There would be police presence from time to time, they'd nail a few offenders, would get around, and people would walk by more quietly.
Do you think it's feasible?
I think it's worth a try, but we'll have to see how it works out.
Yes, thank you. You have a question?
Stanley, and everybody else, I think this is outright something we do need, because it's the only way we can keep these neighborhoods somewhat calm and collected. Oh, boy, I like that. It's the only way we can keep these neighborhoods calm and collected, and over the last four or five years, starting with graffiti, made a big difference. And the awareness in the neighborhood to keep things quiet. And every Friday or Saturday, two o'clock in the morning, I can hear them coming down the block, thirty seconds, I'll be done. But I think you've done a wonderful job, and I certainly appreciate you doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
And I think we have a number of questioners at the podium, do we?
Yeah, just a quick question. So first, I have to start with an embarrassing correction. Apparently, I identified myself as a town meeting member of Precinct Thirteen. I'm very fond of my neighbors in Precinct Thirteen, but I'm actually from Precinct Twelve. Thank you, Harry. So I have just one concern about this. I think the idea is good, I think the tactic of moving this from being a criminal to a civil penalty is likely to be a very effective tactic. I'm concerned about combining that with increasing the fine to a hundred dollars. I've seen in other communities, it's very often done with, you know, traffic violations that are not at all obvious to people who are driving through, but it's been done in other contexts. You can create a harvesting incentive for the police. If we're talking about, and I looked in the description that came with the petition, there was talk about, you know, sort of roaming parties, party buses, lots, large groups of people coming around. If we're asking the police to hand out hundred-dollar fines to everyone involved in that sort of thing, I have sort of two concerns. One is, I think that creates kind of a risky incentive. I don't like the idea of saying to the police, or to the town of Brookline, here's a way to raise a couple thousand bucks, pretty easy, which it is. And I also think we have, I think you're correct in trying to fix a problem, that this has not really been enforced because of it being a criminal penalty. But switching from, hey, this hasn't been enforced for a long time, to all of a sudden, a bunch of people coming home from a party are going to be handed a hundred-dollar fine, seems to me excessive, and I wish that this had stated a fifty-dollar fine with the rest of the changes that you've made.
Thank you for your question.
My response there is, on the floor of town meeting, you may move to amend, to reduce the fine to fifty dollars, that's how we deal with things like that. I can tell you from the sentiment in the neighborhoods that are affected, let's have all the harvesting we can get. These are problems of quality of life. People get disturbed weekend after weekend, year in and year out, and the issue is a serious one, which is impairing our neighbors, the ability to enjoy the quiet enjoyment of their home, to get a decent night's sleep. We could have moved to have it be a three-hundred-dollar fine, and there would have been sentiment for that. I think that would have been overkill, but it's been at fifty dollars for a long time, for a generic bylaw violation. Certainly, a hundred-dollar fine today is no more odious than a fifty-dollar fine was, Lord knows how many years ago, when the fine structure was first set up. But feel free to move it, and more power if your amendment is successful, that's okay.
Please.
Good evening, I'm Ruth Ann Snyder, and I live in a neighborhood that has what the police officially call a party house, and it's a twelve-unit building that's totally occupied by students. Students will go to the colleges, and we have this traffic every weekend, and what the kid, what they're doing, walking down the street, they're not sweet kids, mister, whatever, they're kids looking for drugs, they're looking for a good time, they're out two, three in the morning, and they're ready to party, they're looking for the next good place to go. And why I think it's even more important, because I've been complaining for years, I think if the police got on bicycles, that they could hear the noise before we have to be woken by it. But our police force has a very strange attitude about what the responsibilities are, I'm going to have to take a little more time to read. So they don't like to get out of their cars, they don't like to get out of their cars, they don't. They're very, anyways, so if you put policemen on bicycles, and you had a sturdy fine that didn't give them any criminal record, it would work really fine, because once the kids know that they're either going to pay for their drugs, or they're going to pay for a fine for making noise, they're going to make better choices for themselves. And the last point I want you to understand, and this is really important, whether you think your kid, or someone's kid, will be there or not, is that we're opening up a teen center. And this teen center that we're opening up is going to be about three hundred feet from this drug party house. It's been an identified party house, somebody comes there and sells drugs every semester, they move in every semester. I've known good women who've gone to good Catholic colleges, who've had, they do bootlegging because they want to pay the rent. That means they send out an email, sorry, Lee, they send out an email to their friends, and they say, come, five dollars a person, and they stand out in line to get into this house.
I want to thank you for your comment. The idea is actually to be able to ask questions, and so, you've been enormously entertaining and educational, thank you, but if you could, I think--
You run a very fine meeting, I take my note.
Thank you very much. I think there's a question here in the audience. Yes, you may, and--
My name is Jim Franco, Precinct One. Stanley knows that I was one of the ones who raised some questions about the language and the drafting. The moderator did say that it was too late to make the modifications that we want to make, I accept that. It's likely that there'll be a rewrite of, or someone will suggest that we rewrite this whole subsection of the article at a subsequent town meeting, because of the free speech issue in the section that Stanley and Nancy have proposed. How would you react to that, Stanley?
Actually, I spoke to town council, and in fact contacted the moderator with respect to finding out whether the offensive, or questionably offensive portions could in fact be stricken. I was quite willing to go along with that, and was told that it's beyond the scope of the article. The moderator, the article envisioned adding to the bylaw, did not envision striking it, and therefore he would not permit striking. But I've spoken to town council about preparing new language, or a new amendment to strike offensive language, possibly for the fall town meeting, and I believe she'll be working on it, maybe with me, or with others, such as yourself.
And I thought we had one more question. Did you have a question? Yeah, I was just going to say, would you please hand the mic over? Thank you.
I didn't have a question, I just wanted to state that I live near Boston University, and our McDonald's on Commonwealth Avenue, who used to be right near Boston University, across the little street, next to them, they had a big sign up, we do not accept a hundred-dollar bills. It's the only McDonald's I know that doesn't accept a hundred-dollar bills, because most people that come in, so these students can afford the hundred-dollar fine, or their parents can.
Thank you very much. Any more questions on this issue? All right, thank you very much, Stanley.
Thank you.
Next is Article Sixteen, in-room cooking facilities in lodging houses. Do we have a speaker? Or speakers? And I'd ask my two speakers to identify themselves, please.
Good evening, my name's Cara Bruton, I'm the acting director for the Planning and Community Development Department. My normal job, which I look forward to getting back to soon, is economic development director for the town, and I've asked Dick Benka to join me up here, since he's done a lot of legwork for this article, with Polly Selko, who couldn't be here tonight from our department.
And again, I'm Dick Benka. Now I'm not here as a citizen petitioner, but I am the chair of the town zoning bylaw review committee, and this article went through our committee process.
Very good. And now we have five minutes for opening statement.
So how many people have heard about lodging houses in Brookline in discussion recently? Just so I can get a sense of how much you think you already know about lodging houses? Okay, great. So, one thing to keep in mind is, even though our department works a lot in zoning, there's a whole other parallel process, especially when it comes to lodging houses, and that's why the selectmen, they license lodging houses, there's regulations that the selectmen have. So there's these kind of two separate worlds that we're going to be talking about tonight. This town meeting article just deals with the zoning part of it, but there's also licensing and regulations, which we'll refer to, but are not coming to town meeting this spring. The Planning and Community Development Department, working with Dick Benka and the zoning bylaw committee-- Committee, began looking at lodging houses in our current zoning, and the current zoning does not allow lodging houses to have any cooking facilities. Over the last 20 years, we've seen a lot of lodging houses, just because of market forces, go away. Part of, one of the divisions in my department is, has to do with affordable housing, and one of the ways that we preserve or create affordable housing units is to do that through lodging houses. In the past, we've acquired, helped acquire or rehab six lodging houses that are owned and operated by nonprofit housing operators. But because of the zoning constraints, none of these lodging houses have kitchens or cooking facilities in those units. That means that the users of these lodging houses, these low-income lodging houses, are not able to have their own food preparation areas, so the food storage, as well as food cooking, is shared, and that limits some of the flexibility that these people have in their own units, and can cause issues, as you can imagine, if you had to share your kitchen with other family households as well. So traditionally, this has been the case, that lodging houses weren't allowed to have cooking facilities, and there, throughout time, has been concern about small units being safe if there's a fire that breaks out. And of course, as soon as you have a cooking facility, you're more likely, perhaps, to be, have fire issues in the kitchen, and that kind of thing. Recently, and I'm sure you've seen this in the newspaper articles, regionally and across the country, there's a newer model of thinking about lodging houses that's called SROs, or single-room occupancy. And it's, but the term, though, is enhanced SROs. And the enhanced means, guess what? We think there's a way to build lodging houses that helps affordable people live in a unit, and even, they can be allowed to have cooking facilities that are safe with the building, and that provide those individuals more independence. So enhanced SROs are now being built in Boston, and the fire, safety, police departments in Boston and across the country are, have figured out over these last couple of years how to create regulations and do further inspections to make sure that these are being done legally and safely. Furthermore, on top of these SROs just kind of happening throughout the country, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which helps fund many affordable housing units in Massachusetts, and certainly in Brookline that the town often matches funds for, the State Department has, sorry, this department has now decided that they're going to put funding for lodging houses, they're going to have a preference for that funding to be for lodging, new lodging houses, or rehabilitated lodging houses, that have their own cooking facilities. So there's several things going on here, but the takeaway is that the state has a preference for funding lodging houses with their own cooking facilities. I have one minute left, so, sorry, I'm going to speed up here. The zoning is quite simple, in that it takes away the requirement, it takes away the prohibition of cooking facilities. However, you'll see in Article 16, there's also a paragraph that it only does that for lodging houses that are owned and operated by a group that commits through a deed restriction to have 100% of all of the units be what we would call lower moderate income, so 80% of the area, family income. And I'm sorry, because I'm getting short here. I think I'm going to leave it at that, and we can-
We do have a closing statement as well, so-
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Are there any questions for these two speakers? And if you, you would please identify yourself.
Richard Wynn, town meeting member, Precinct 2. Could you give us a breakdown of the geographical likelihood of where this will impact in town? Can you also address whether this changes the suitability of residences for families with children, and which schools would be impacted as a result?
Sure. So as far as the geography goes, lodging houses per zoning are allowed in F and M districts, so are, not in the single-family residence districts, but in F and M residence districts, as well as in our commercial districts of local business and general business. Those are mostly in North Brookline, those, those areas. I would say there's very few of those districts south of Route 9. As far as suitability of families with children, because of the way this language is written, um, let's see, let me think about this. The, not in the zoning, but in the regulations, like again, there's the, Betsy Dewitt has been working with the Licensing Committee, looking at our lodging house regulations, and lodging houses that have cooking facilities are only allowed in single-room occupancy units. So we may have lodging houses that have families and those that don't, but the only lodging houses that will be allowed to have cooking facilities within the unit will be for single occupancy units.
So, just, may I?
Yes, you may. You may ask a follow-up question.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the impact of this will be primarily in North Brookline, and we have no assessment of the impact on schools?
I'm, um, it will be primarily in North Brookline. It will also primarily be lodging houses that are already in existence and want to add cooking facilities to those single-room occupancy units. That's the request that we've been hearing the most from. As far as impact on schools, I am not sure how there would be an impact on schools, because again, it's single-room occupancy units that this is dealing with for the regulations. And children-
There's no impact on schools.
Right.
I would think that would be the case, yeah. And just to clarify the, the first question, the impact of where this might, might have an impact. This article doesn't change the zoning bylaw with respect to the areas where lodging houses are allowed. Lodging houses are allowed now in FM residential districts and in certain commercial districts. All this does is it says that a lodging house, which is otherwise permitted in these districts, may have cooking facilities. It doesn't change the area in which lodging houses are permitted.
No, I, I understand that there's an objective behind this, which is targeted specifically at the areas that currently support lodging houses.
Well, it's, I mean, the, the targeting, the targeting, I think, really is, is to respond to a, a demand for enhanced SROs, and the enhanced lodging houses with cooking facilities, which certain nonprofits have indicated are, are preferable, and which the state has indicated would be preferable.
Thank you. All right. And I will get to you, I'll keep you in mind. Thank you.
John Bassett, Precinct 6. Could a single-room occupancy unit with cooking facilities qualify as, as an affordable unit for purposes of Chapter 40B?
I believe that it could. I'm not 100% sure about that. But these requirements are actually stricter than a 40B. So these requirements are, would be that 100% of the units have to be low mod income units. So I'm not sure why someone would go the 40B route in order to provide the same product.
What I hear you asking is, might this benefit the town by moving us closer to the 10% for 40B purposes?
Yes, oh, yes. Sorry, I, I thought you meant the permitting process. These units would count towards our state mandated requirements, yes.
But there would also need to be deed restrictions to comply with the 40B rules, and maybe something else.
Yes, deed restrictions, and also enforcement through our office, you know, following up with some of those deeds, yeah.
Thank you.
Are the lodging houses that have a common kitchen, just one kitchen that everybody uses? Is that included in your?
There, there are now, and indeed, under our current bylaw, the only kind of lodging house that you can have is a lodging house with a common kitchen. That would still be permitted. That could still happen. What this permits is lodging houses with individual cooking facilities, or in fact, lodging houses with individual cooking facilities and a common kitchen. Under our current bylaw, you cannot have individual cooking facilities. But the sort of traditional lodging house model of the lodging house with a common kitchen and a common diner, dining area would still be allowed.
Are the units large enough to put cooking facilities in them?
There's a minimum, this, this doesn't specify it, but the Licensing Committee is in, in the process of drafting regulations that specify a minimum size. Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Next question, please.
Well, basically, John Bassett asked most of my question, but I guess I just want to clarify that there are deed restrictions required for these SRO units, to keep them affordable. Is that not correct?
Yes.
And those deed restrictions would then, in my belief, also help qualify for 40B, to count for 40B.
Right. And, and indeed, the affordability requirement of this tracks the existing 40B requirement of 80%, and it's also written to, to track the 40B requirement. Should that change, this requirement says, or any other definition of affordability consistent with the provisions of Chapter 40B of the general laws.
Have these units already qualified for 40B without the kitchen facilities? Do you know?
They're not.
I thi- I think many of them are on our list. We do have some units that we consider affordable, that the state doesn't for various bureaucratic reasons, but I'd, I'd be glad to get that list for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions?
Hi, Naomi Schweitzer, again, from town meeting member, Precinct 10. I just wanted to say thank you. I'm very supportive of this warrant. As someone who has worked with individuals who are low-income for many years, helping them to find affordable housing, I can say without a doubt, when they are considering their various housing options, that at the top of their list is preferring to live in a housing situation where they have their own kitchen, for many of the reasons that I think have been laid out in the warrant, but that include privacy, independence, better budgeting, and above all, healthier eating. So I really appreciate the town's leadership in putting this forward.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Would you like to make a closing statement of some kind?
Thank you. Just Fran Price in our office. I'll leave with the parting words that Fran Price in our Affordable Housing Division will be back next week, and so if you all have follow-up questions, she will talk your ear off with much more detail than I could provide tonight. And our phone number is 617-730-2468. That's actually my number, but I can transfer you, you to Fran Price. She's, or you can look her up on, on the web.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. 19, 20, and 21 articles and speakers? You can sit in any chair and bring a mic over. Suit yourselves. You'll flank me. All right. Very good. And, um-
Can you hold me over here? Or next to you?
That would be fine. No, you can be right there.
And your rules are five minutes for opening, two minutes to answer a question, and then three minutes closing? And if you would begin by introducing yourself, that would be much appreciated.
Good evening. My name is Gary Stoloff. I'm a member of the Board of Directors, Directors of the Coolidge Corner Theater Foundation.
Hi, I'm Denise Cassell. I'm the Executive Director of the Coolidge Corner Theater.
We're here tonight to talk a little bit about our proposal before town meeting. We would like to expand our theater, and that expansion would include an enlarged lobby, new bathrooms, new concession and ticketing areas, and a, a new cinema with approximately 180 seats. Our current facility has four screening rooms, however, only two of them are considered first-run screening rooms by the, the industry, the, the film industry. And as such, we're competing with, with other venues such as Kendall Square and West Newton that have considerably more screens. We would like to have a third screen. We, it will enable us to showcase more of the, the film product that's out there, and open films on the, the night that they open, and other of our competitive theaters. And in order to facilitate this expansion, we need town meeting to approve our three warrant articles. The warrant articles, the first two involve an easement at the rear of the property that the owner of the theater granted to the town of Brookline in 1964 to enable the town to build parking behind the theater. Our design not only builds on that land, subject to the easement, but we've also redesigned the parking lot behind the theater in such a way that, that we think the, is more or less the same than is what, what is there now. In other words, the line of parking closest to the theater moves back away from the theater. The drive aisle is, is reduced, however, it's still the same width as the drive aisle and the rest of the Center Street lot. And the line of parking closest to party favors moves a few feet further away, and that enables us to build to our rear lot line and create a lobby that more than doubles what we have now. There is a net loss of one parking space in the redesign, however, there's a net add of two handicap spaces. So there are 12, 12 parking spaces back there now. The redesign would have 11, two of which are handicap. We could have gotten a one-for-one trade with 12 spaces. However, our conversations with the town engineer and other town officials, they felt having the handicap spaces in that location was, was, was a more important thing than, than having the parking spaces one, one-to-one. Our proposal is for a two-story building with the second story being larger than the first, creating a cantilever over the sidewalk. That is the subject of the third warrant article, requesting permission to use air rights above town land. That is a design feature that we happen to like for a number of reasons. One, it allows us to get a better cinema. Two, it allows us to get a larger cinema. And three, it allows us to create some sheltered space for, for waiting area for customers who have to wait in between shows. That's pretty much the, our request in, in a nutshell. I think Denise wants to say a few words about the industry and why this is important to us.
I'm Denise Cassell, the Executive Director at the Coolidge. So I deal with all of the distributors and some individual filmmakers, and this is an opportunity for us to bring more films to the community. I mean, we can only open two large first-run films in the house, and many people will go to the Kendall to see other films, and this is an opportunity that we can bring another film. It's as simple as that, for you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Would you, please? Would you, please? And if you would identify yourself.
What is this whole thing cost?
Would you identify yourself?
Bruce Wolfman, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member, Precinct. What is this whole thing going to cost?
We've, we've estimated the cost of the project between $3 and $4 million that we will be raising privately.
It won't cost the town anything.
I'm all for it.
That's what we like to hear.
Are there others with questions or comments?
Diana Spiegel, Town Meeting Member in Precinct 2. I love the Coolidge Theater, and we're lucky enough to be able to walk to it, so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to see more movies there. And I also understand from a friend who lives in South Brookline, she thinks it's a wonderful draw for people from South Brookline. That's the reason they come to Coolidge Corner, and then they eat dinner before or after the movie and go into the shops or whatever. So I think it, it can help revitalize things in Coolidge Corner. But I do have a question about, is there something about where loading trucks will park that will change? And could you explain that, where they'll park in the parking lot?
Yes. When we redesigned the rear parking area, we did that in conjunction with, with our design team and with the town. And the town requested that the loading zone be relocated, and it's kind of hard for me to tell you where it is, but it's not where it is now, and it's about 25 or 30 feet away in an area that's, that, that will be redone as part of the, the sort of town work in that lot. The town made some requests to make some changes in that lot, and they asked us to help them design it as part of the whole process. So, I mean, if you want to come up afterwards, I have a drawing and I can point at it, but it's hard for me to explain it verbally.
Would this, for example, be a truck that would service CVS?
No.
No?
Well, I shouldn't say no. It will service some of the CVS trucks. It, it will, CVS, CVS's loading problem is something that's sort of bigger than us. They come in there with a giant truck. They come in there at 5:00 or 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night.
They come into that lot, actually?
Yeah.
I mean, how, where do they get in?
Well, they, they pretty much block access in certain areas, and it's something that's been a problem for everyone. And while we've had a number of conversations about it, it's not our place to solve that particular problem, although, quite frankly, I have the solution if somebody wants to know it. But the, the short answer is, I don't know how to deal with the, there's no proposal on the table right now to deal with the 18-wheeler CVS truck that comes and blocks access.
Okay, thank you. All right, next question.
Okay. It sounds like a great idea, go to the Coolidge Corner Theater.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you just say your name?
Judy Chernoff. I live on the famous Crown and Shield Road. Going, going, gone. I can't believe, as nice as it sounds, your proposal, it isn't going to impact parking. You're adding a theater with 100 seats. Already, when we go to that theater, sometimes you can't get parking in that lot. So I don't like to be a negative about it, but that's a problem.
We've presented to all the business groups in town that we could speak to. We met with the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association. We met with the Economic Development Advisory Board. We met with the Transportation Board. We met with the Chamber of Commerce, and all of those organizations have enthusiastically supported our proposal. So while I understand why you might consider that a, a problem, it seems to be outweighed in the mind of the business owners that, that the, the new theater is good for Coolidge Corner, and, and we agree.
Thank you. Next question.
John Bassett, Precinct 6. Is there anything in the zoning, and I confess I haven't read the articles, to limit the future use of the additional space to a cinema?
No.
And the second question is, are there drawings that we can see perhaps online?
There have, I have some drawings here. There are, there is a site plan. If you would like, I can show you what I have here. We haven't published anything online.
Well, I, I don't want to look at them tonight. I think it would be appropriate for you to put at least the preliminary drawings where Town Meeting can see them before we vote.
Let me, let me just explain. We have, we have done, we have not completed a building design per se. We have done enough study to determine what we can fit on the land and what the, the shape of the building would be. We are a small nonprofit organization, and we decided, and, and it really wasn't that hard a decision, that we couldn't afford to go through with a full architectural design process and the cost that entailed, with the risk that it would never get off the ground. So we worked with our design team to understand what the land use issues are, which are really what is before Town Meeting here, here this, this month, is will the town adjust the easement and grant us the air rights to enable us to, to design and build a building? That being said, we intend to go through, and we've, we've committed to go through, the full town process of design review, planning board review, zoning board review. So this project's design will be shaped by the folks in town that are entrusted with that responsibility.
Sure, but you're, you're going to do this after you get your, your zoning relief. And I say that we should see-
Yes and no.
We should see what you've got before we give you the, the zoning relief. If I think what you've got isn't, isn't so good, I might be disinclined to give you the relief you seek. So I think you should show us what you've got.
Yeah, I can show you what, what we have. It is not going to satisfy you, I think, because it isn't a full design. I should, I should explain another piece of the process that we're in the midst of right now, which is the negotiation of a memorandum of agreement with the Board of Selectmen and Town Council that commits us to a number of things. The most important thing, I think, from the point you just made, is that if Town Meeting, in its wisdom, agrees to grant, approve the three warrant articles, those warrant articles are not officially active. In other words, they're, 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 they're put into escrow until we're through the rest of the process, until we're through design review, planning board review, zoning board review, and, and whatever other conditions are imposed upon us. So the vote at Town Meeting is only an interim step, and the warrant articles only become active when we've satisfied every other condition.
Is that a condition of the articles? Because that, that is unusual. Normally, zoning amendments take effect when approved by the Attorney General.
That's right. It, it, it is unusual, I think. I'm not an expert on the, on the legal ramifications, but we've been negotiating this with, with Jennifer Depazo and others. And we think we've figured out a mechanism that protects everyone. In other words, if we don't get to the finish line, the town hasn't given anything up.
That's, I'll, I'll let you go with one observation. You, you've said that you're going to double the lobby, and you're going to add, I think, 180-seat-
Correct.
-theater. That sounds like a preliminary design. It sounds like you have something in mind.
I, I'll show you what I have.
Would you put it, would you put it online so everybody can see it?
I, I don't see why not. I would need to discuss that with others before I do.
Thank you.
And there's someone here before you, so we'll, we'll get to you next, please.
Sorry, Cara Bruton. I just wanted to make a, a quick comment that the Articles for Town Meeting Vote actually, I'm going to wait for John to listen to this, too. John? The Articles for Town, no, 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 I just want, something you were talking about, that Articles for Town Meeting actually are not, do not address zoning at all? Don't, okay, they don't touch it either way. The Articles for Town Meeting, what they do is Town Meeting authorizes the selectmen to enter into negotiations about the, about the three articles, including a land lease, basically.
Yeah, air rights.
Could you hand the mic?
Yeah, definitely.
When I see this, I'm walking down Harvard Street, and I see this nice theater. Is it going to make, think I'm in 1933, or is it going to make me think I'm in 2015?
Well, let me say this. We, we have committed, and, and this is in the memorandum of agreement also, that the existing Art Deco theater, in all its beauty and accoutrements, will not be modified. The, the theater at the back of the building, we're hoping to design to be something that, that is striking and that everyone is proud of. I don't know whether we're going to design a building to look old or a building to look new, but I can tell you we're going to do our best to design a great building.
Doesn't really answer my question.
Well, yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
You won't see it from Harvard Street.
It's not changing Harvard Street. It's in the back parking.
Even the inside is, is sticking with Art Deco. All you'd have to say is, yes, we're going to stick with Art Deco in the new part.
We may not.
Interesting. Can, can we be sure that at the Town Meeting, we're, we're going to see drawings of the, what you're doing on the screen?
Yes. Yes. I would have projected them here. I'd like to introduce Michael Maynard. He's the, the Chair of our Board. He just arrived late from another pressing engagement, but, oh.
Thank you very much. Next question.
I'm Jim Franco from Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 1. I read somewhere that going before Town Meeting now with these proposal, with these warrant articles, had something to do with fundraising. Can you explain?
No, it doesn't have any-
Does it or does it not?
It doesn't have anything to do with fundraising. However, fundraising is a big part of the, the project and a, and an important aspect of the project. We can't really be out fundraising without the outlines of an arrangement that we can execute, i.e. the Town Meeting vote. Once we hopefully receive the Town Meeting vote, we will proceed on a two-track plan, one to design and, and approve a building, and the other to get our fundraising program in, in order and begin to, to seek funds in earnest.
Are there more questions? All right. I think we can call it an evening. Oh, actually, would you care to make a closing statement?
You want to ask for their vote?
Yeah, yeah. They always say you want to go for the close. I apologize for having been late. I did have another event in Wellesley, but I, I actually hadn't expected, I thought you'd all be home and asleep by now. We, we have been, we've gone out of our way, I guess, over the last couple of months to be as transparent as we possibly can. We've had many, many meetings with various stakeholders in town, at the theater, out in back of the theater, showing everybody where it is and what we're doing and what it's going to look like. I gather the projection system didn't work tonight. We apologize because we did have drawings to show you. We do hope that you'll support us at Town Meeting, and I don't know if you explained, Gary, but part of the process is that, assuming we're-
The MOA, yeah.
The MOA is very important. We, we offer that upfront as a protection for the Town Meeting, Town Meeting and the citizens of the town, that whatever you vote, if we should ultimately be unsuccessful for whatever reasons, the status quo will remain. If we are successful and raise our money and pull our building permits, then we would exercise the, the benefit of those, those Town Meeting votes. But again, thank you so much for coming, and we do hope you'll support us.
Now it's an evening.